Ninety, at least ninety rooms.
Yeah, no, I was impressed. I thought that was great.
Ninety-seven registered.
Yeah.
But some, I know four that didn't come.
Yeah, but still, it was great.
It was actually, it was pretty fun to watch there, having a good time.
It was a perfect day.
Yeah, well, it was a little, little cool, but.
Not really.
Was it? Oh.
Not when you walk.
Oh, okay.
And it was like.
And the snow was really coming down at times. I, I blew that sidewalk off probably four times in front of my house.
Make sure it was clear.
And we shoveled the three neighbors.
People appreciate that. I heard from a few comments. I thought that was good.
Three neighbors that we shoveled their sidewalks and, and the other guys farther out towards church, they were out there shoveling too, just before the group started. So it was nice. I, I was impressed.
It was a nice day for us, Santa.
Well, it's seven o'clock, so I guess we might as well call the meeting tour. Sorry of visiting here, but Cole's not gonna be here tonight. He had another meeting that he had to attend, so is there any additions to the agenda? If not, somebody wish to move Judy moves the agenda that is presented? Any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing now, I'll call the question of the favor. Posed, seeing none, it's carried. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the minutes of the regular November the twelfth meeting. Any airs, missions, questions?
I'll make the motion to accept the. Matters from the twelfth meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question of the favor. Posed, seeing none, it's carried. Now, let's see. Committee of the whole, first budget kick count. Any questions on that? The minutes of that one? Somebody wish, Richard?
You.
We're getting there about your recesses, but what you talked about.
Yeah, so Richard moves it. Any discussion on Richard's motion? Hearing now, I'll call the question of the favor. It's carried. Thank you. Yeah, and also thank you Judy for, you know, working in that meetings. Okay, we'll move on to the Vulcan County Healthcare Grant Information. So.
Yeah, we, we got this at the end of last week and went up to the CAO's and the mayor's, but we just thought we'd pass it along for information so that if and when the time comes, there's bigger conversations, you guys are aware of the pros and cons of.
I, I did forward this on to the.
The group.
The group, Brenda and Grant. I, I didn't think that, like, I thought, well, maybe, especially then I went after receiving this, I thought, well, maybe that, that group could apply for this money, but it doesn't sound like they could. I think that it had to be municipal side. But anyway, Brenda was gonna look into it and talk to the docs to see if there was anything that they could do on their path. And it, it even, Arrowwood falls under that same program, their clinic, as, as the fund, with the funding side. So they can't even, you know, to say, well, can Arrowwood use it? We could support Arrowwood's, because they, they follow the same sort of funding program, so. When you kind of read it, it looks like.
Yeah.
Kind of.
They, they were asked to explore the, the grant funding options there, and when they, they looked at it, it wasn't worth dismantling what are very success. One of those things we're getting almost, we don't, we don't qualify for grant funding because we're already doing a good job.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's.
So anyway, appreciate the county looking into it and, but is there any other questions or comments on that? Maybe we should send, you wanna get, just get back to Nels.
I, yeah, I've already talked to Nels about the presentation, and I said if council had anything to bring forward, I would, but.
I think, just when I was reading it over, I was thinking, you know, like, it could come back and bite you hard and, you know, the way everything's set up, and I think you had to see what, totally what's involved with the whole thing before you made any decision on something like this.
Okay, so do we, you know, need a motion for file questions? Will?
Yeah. You're in.
Any discussion on Will's motion? Hearing now, I'll call the question of the favor. Posed, seeing none, it's carried. Okay, moving on to the cash statement. Sure.
Everybody's had a chance during you. Um. It's essentially the same like that last month.
Yeah.
Unless there's anywhere, we're sitting in a good financial position with the four point two in, in our general accounts.
We, we still have two more months to go too, so those numbers will change a little bit in the, in. Kind of in what we've talked about in the other areas, once we get into the next one year to date too, you'll see some, some of the stuff gets spent more at the latter part. It's just so that in case of something goes really bad, then they've got some funds that they don't have to worry about in the end, so. Okay, any questions on that one?
I'll make the motion to accept the cash statement, period ending October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, thank you. La Musa, any discussion on Nels' motion? Hearing none, call the question of the favor. Posed, hearing none, Will's. Call it, carry, hearing none, let's see. Okay, moving on to the year to date. Yeah, like I was saying, that, you know, this takes us to the end of October again, so we've still got two months to go, so.
Essentially, when you're looking at our total expenses of, you know, where we're at, we spent about one point, sorry, about six hundred thousand dollars a month. So if you look at it that way, just on a total average, we're in pretty decent shape for the end of the year.
Okay, any questions on any of the lines or administration or?
Just the, sorry.
Go ahead.
The forty-one thousand in general taxes, if you use it, haven't been paid, is that just?
Yeah, just outstanding.
But, but some of that's on that, on that.
Tips program?
That, what do you call it?
Is it tips?
Tip, yeah, tip programs.
Right, yeah.
So it, um. So it'll ship.
Tips and arrears.
When I sell you the house.
Yeah, then you could.
Then you get to pay off somebody else's taxes.
Yeah. Okay, Judy.
I'll move the year to date statement.
Thank you. Judy moves the year to date for, in October thirty-first. Any discussion? Hearing now, I'll call the question of the favor. Posed, seeing none, it's carried. Yeah. Okay, now, the little longer one, the bylaw.
Yes. So one of the things is, as you're aware, if you read my report, we went through the map, the municipal accountability program. One of the things that came up when we were in middle of discussions were some of the things I'm trying to address with these policy amendments and this bylaw one. This one's pretty straightforward. The MGA allows for consolidation of bylaws, but it also says you have to delegate that authority. Even though the MGA says the CAO can do it, you need to give me permission to do it formally in a motion somewhere. Theoretically, we should have done this years and years and years ago, but any easy way to do it is amending the bylaw to add those two motions, sorry, those two lines to allow for the consolidation of bylaws. The other bottom part is making sure that I include correction of clerical gramm- uh, grammatical. Chromaticals and typographical errors, and then altering the numbers should, you know, you add a number and then it changes the A, B, C, D, making sure that I can do that as well. So under no circumstances does it change any of the provisions of, of the bylaw and its meaning, so. And then the second one will almost contradict something that'll come up in current business, but it, through the CAO bylaw, you can also appoint a returning officer. It says right in the election act that I am by default, but again, you guys have to delegate that authority. So if you put it in the CAO bylaw, from now until the end of time, if a motion is not made, your CAO is your returning officer.
Okay, Will, did you have a comment or?
Do you have an example of when you're into it, like, sorry, consolidated or not? What was the word used?
A consolidation for, yeah, so for, on a consolidation, so our land use bylaw, every time we do a change of something in that, we write in it, write in that it's consolidated with the other one. But in order for me to physically make that look like one document, you have to give me that permission. So this bylaw here is amendment to our CAO bylaw. If we are to post, when we post this online, if we, if you haven't given me that authority, theoretically, we're supposed to put this bylaw up, and then this bylaw up, and then this bylaw up. You have to read through this and see where it fits back in. By allowing me to consolidate it, I can put the consolidation on our website and it shows the bylaw laid out with the amendments placed right in it, so it actually reads properly. And we've been doing that all along.
Yeah, and, and if you take a look at the bylaws too, they'll, you'll, if you look at one portion of it, it'll tell you the, the dates that.
When you amended.
When we amended them, so if you're really wanting to go back in history, you can go back in there, figure it out when the.
The main one that we consolidated that brings the most attention to it is the procedural one. Because that's one that you guys use the most, and for, after the first time we did the map, four years ago, we amended that. It seemed like every couple of weeks, we had to do an amendment to it. So we ended up with quite a few and being able to consolidate that so that it reads properly, so that we, you as a new council come along, you don't have to read five different bylaws. You can read the one consolidation and it makes sense, so. Does that make sense?
Okay. Any other, call the department.
I was just gonna make the recommendation. Um, the council gives bylaw fourteen eighty-nine dash eight twenty-four at first reading.
Okay, thank you. Any question on Barbara's motion? Hearing none, I will call the question of the favor. Posed. It's carried. Okay, you, it's the second reading. Richard?
Want to read it?
No, that's.
Just move for the second reading.
Yes, yeah, that's fine with me. It means okay for everybody. Okay, I'll call the question of the favor. Posed, seeing none. Okay, introduction of the third. Judy moves to introduce the third. Okay, any question on Judy's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question of the favor. It's carried unanimously. And now introduction of the third. Well?
The motion.
Introduce the third. Any discussion on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question of the favor. Posed, seeing none, it's carried unanimously. Okay, thank you very much. Now, moving on to the signing authority, policy number F zero three.
Hopefully through the report, this is very, very straightforward. You guys do know that we electronically signed some letters and grant applications already. The, a lot of our financial stuff through the ATP now is to sign through Doc to Sign, so the only change that we made from, uh, the, this was a pre-existing with another community, and they had, they had specified themselves to specifically Adobe. We didn't want to do that because there are so many signing, uh, uh, softwares out there, so we just put a dedicated signing software. So if somebody uses Adobe Sign or somebody used Doc to Sign, I think. Lyle used one different the other day when I signed that I, I hadn't used before, so I had to register. So it allows us to use the multitude of, and. They actually put this into legislation a couple of years ago for electronic sign, so it's just bringing things up to date. Probably should have had this up when you guys acknowledged to us at the board meeting, but. And then very specific on what we can do with it, so the letters, those sort of things, we already do that if, if, if Tom allows us to use his digital signature on a, on a letter, we always send him an email just asking, you know. That way we've got a copy, because yes, you can send that letter out on my behalf.
So you can see in the top that document like that, where it says policy number F oh three, you can see where the amendments are, so if you're really wanting to go back, you can see, you know, it was adopted in two thousand, so it's twenty-three years old, but it's been updated.
Several times.
Several times since then, yeah. Okay, any discussion on this? If not, somebody wish to move? Barbara? Okay, any discussion on Barbara's motion? Hearing now, I'll call the question of the favor. It's carried. Great, thank you. And now we'll move on to the returning officers' appointments.
Uh, so again, you guys just passed a bylaw allowing me to be named as returning officer, but because we didn't have it in place beforehand, and we do have a general election coming up in October, and we can't take nominations since early January. We've never actually taken a nomination in January, but who knows, this year might be the year, and so the act does say that you can appoint a returning officer and a substitute returning officer, so Amanda said that she would be our substitute returning officer, should something happen to me between now and end of the elections.
Okay, so, yeah, we were somewhere, we just got notice that we needed to do this in the near future, so.
Yeah, I, I had it, I, I had it for the December meeting, but, and the only reason is because of the note from last time.
Yeah.
The last time we appointed, we didn't do it till February, even though we could accept as early as January.
Okay. Well.
So just for review or conversation, say, for the returning officer, you're just responsible for getting the nominations?
Uh, getting the nominations, arranging for the election, and reporting to municipal fairs the results from the election.
Yeah, he doesn't have to physically do it, although he will.
Yeah, I, I can appoint people to do it, and I have very, very tentatively asked all of the staff if they would help, uh, conduct an election in this office, should one be necessary this year, and everybody's in favor, we've done, we've done the last two. Uh, even though we didn't have municipal elections, we did have, uh, the school board and, uh, last year.
Was it close?
There, the last one, yeah, we had the question on the Senate. Through, we had that vote, and then we also have the question on daylight savings and the others, so, and it works out fairly well, what we do. Uh, I know the council has contracted that service out in the past, and it was around five thousand dollars to get that done, and that's what they hold it at the lodge hall. Uh, when we do it here, we bring in everybody in through the council chambers, and now it's ran fairly efficiently, and we are actually able to do it through, uh, through the COVID elections, so kept everybody safe.
Okay, Richard?
I'll make the recommendation that council appoint Kim Foath as returning officer and Amanda Gochey as sub- a substitute returning offer, officer for the twenty, twenty twenty-five general municipal elections as per the local authorities' election act thirteen one.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on Richard's motion? Hearing now, I'll call the question of the favor. Posed, seeing none, it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to Stu, who wanted to spend the money.
So just, Stu wanted to apologize. He was gonna bring this up at the committee of the whole meeting, and then, of course, it was at the bottom of his notes, and we got all the way through, and he came back and said, I forgot to talk to council about the flag poles. I said, well, let's put it on the next, the agenda. They know because of the amount that we put in the budget, that he was, remember, he was gonna try to buy one pole out of this year's budget. So he got the prices, uh, there's the four poles, uh, the two forty foot, the two twenty-five foot, Chris is asked to put two up at the tourist center on each end of Vulcan sign, so we can do ceremonial stuff down there. Gives you an opportunity for, like, requests from the Legion for, uh, the Legion flags and those sort of things, uh, to do that there as well, which is a pretty visible spot on Main Street. Uh, price of the poles has come down, you can see the quote, so Stu currently has seventy-five hundred dollars in the budget that you guys put there for the purchase of one pole. Uh, he'd like to spend that seventy-five hundred and pull ten from Parks Reserve and actually buy all four poles and get them in place before the end of the year. You can see by the quote, you have to pay for them upfront, so, uh, this will, this will have this in this year's budget.
Just, okay, am I, um, is there clerical errors? It says twenty fourteen operational budget twice. There's, there's.
Twenty fourteen?
Yeah, conclusion.
Conclusion and the recommendation.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely, that's a mistake. It's a clerical error. I do apologize. Yeah, I do apologize. That would be the twenty twenty-four. In, in both circumstances, I apologize. It's right in the, in the financial implications, it's twenty twenty-four. I do apologize.
I don't know, I didn't notice that before.
I can tell you straight out, that's between me, because Stu, Stu wrote the report and I cleaned it up, and I do the recommendations, so that's completely on me.
Wrong.
Wow, well, the, the two is right beside the one. Makes a huge difference in the budget though.
Okay, so, what's your thoughts, folks?
This is just the poles, not the, not the actual flags, because.
Yeah.
That's over, no, that's right. This is just the, uh, the fixture, so this is the base, the pole and the top.
Okay.
Like, you know, the one that the lines put up, I mean, it's, it's, it was a nice pole. It's all aluminum, it seems to be holding up in the wind, it, it's, it's kind of like that, and I, I don't know if it's the same company or not, but, uh. They were nice poles, and that was not a bad price, because I know what we paid for ours, so.
So, about twenty-five, twenty-four.
Twenty foot?
Yeah, twenty, yeah, that'd be the equivalent to the ones that we're getting for twenty-four hundred dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Judy?
I'll make the recommendation that council approves the purchase of the four flag poles from Aurora Flags and banners at the cost not to exceed eighteen thousand, with funding of seventy-five hundred to be drawn from the twenty twenty-four operational budget, and ten thousand five hundred to be drawn from the Parks Capital Reserve.
Okay, great, thank you. Any discussion on, go ahead.
Sorry, um, I just, the Parks Reserve, like, we did have some discussion on maybe other project that, I might want to use that mic, or is that right?
That one was, uh, we had earmarked for the sports courts, and the sports courts have come in well under budget. So it currently has a balance, that one currently has a balance of eighteen thousand.
Nothing for the cemetery?
Cemetery has its own reserve. And so, yeah, this one's just the parks one.
Okay, any other questions or? Okay, if not, I will call the question of the favor. Posed, seeing none, it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the C can.
And this one just came up with the storage at the arena. Uh, as you guys know, for years, we packed things up and down to that room upstairs, and there's, uh, again, now it's starting to get very congested again. A few years ago, council approved the, uh, storage lot beside the public workshop for C can storage for community groups, and so there was a discussion internally about whether it would be beneficial to have it out there, and they decided that it was, and so, uh. Chris has, uh, funding in his, uh, recreation reserve. That's the money that we left over from the original recreation committee that he's been piece, uh, piece by piece, uh, trying to get significant things done with that money, so. This is, this is a perfect, uh, storage for stuff that they have accumulated over the years, with that, we saw from the quote that that's a delivered price, so that's down in place. He wrote the report, there was not snow everywhere, so I don't know if that will delay it at all, but.
I, I, I'm definitely in favor of this just going up in that area a few times over the last few weeks. I'm thinking, like, it's not conducive to working safely up in that area.
Trying to, well, trying to get things down two flights of stairs.
Yeah, exactly.
The doors, just about every event that we do, and that's what's brought it on.
Yes, yeah.
You know, so, it, it worked for a place to put it short term, but the idea was always find a better place for it.
Yeah.
And I, too, am not opposed to it at all. I, I just question whether, and I appreciate he's gone through all this work, but would it be better not to get two twenties instead of one forty, because, um, you know, uh, I just look at the stuff that's gonna go into the far end. You know, if it's only twenty feet to go in and get it, or if it's forty feet, well, you know, but again, I appreciate he's done the work. They, this is what they want.
I do know that he had a conversation with Public Works, and Public Works has agreed to build shelving and everything and got all signs, so.
So that was the only thing. I mean, I was looking online today at some C cans and, and, you know, so the, the price, I, that wasn't the only thing I had, it, it concerned about.
Two twenties.
Would be, would be better. We've got the room to put two twenties in, but it's theirs, not mine. I'm not trying to second guess their philosophy, I'm just trying to say that sometimes you put something in forty feet and it's gonna be.
Yeah.
There at the end for a long time, but you.
Yeah, knowing Chris, he's probably did his homework on the two twenties, and maybe they didn't have twenties, and so.
No, that you, I.
Did they have them with this company?
Very, well, I didn't use the same company, but there is, there's lots out there, but again, I'm not trying to second guess their philosophy.
No, uh, as the wording is, and Tom's dealt with this before, uh, sometimes wording on motions is very, very specific, so if it says one C can or, but this says purchase a C can storage container at a cost not to exceed sixty-nine hundred dollars, so perhaps that could be two C cans if you could get a.
Again, I.
You're, you're allocating that money.
Yeah.
If, if that's what they want, go for it, but, you know, I just look at sometimes and say.
For sure.
Okay.
That's better.
Do we need to, in the actual motion, do we need to put a, a new C can? I know it says a further, but, or, I mean, it's the talent that's doing it.
Well, this, this gives them a lot, by doing it this way, gives the ability to.
Like, if he gets a good used one, just as long as.
If you trust with that, you're, you're allocating the funding. If you want to be very specific for a new, as for the whole, that you could do that absolutely as well.
Not in the.
Not in the.
Good.
We could just, um, possibly just say one or two C cans, right?
Yeah.
No.
Whatever.
Yeah.
Well, I, I just know that when we ran into C cans before, when we originally did it, it was, you wanted to make sure everything's the same.
Colors and fur and used by law.
I think if it wasn't the talent actually doing it, then maybe we'd get more specific on colors and.
Because we try to match them with the whites that are there.
Yeah.
I, I kind of think Chris is got a good head on the shoulders, and I don't know if I want to micromanage it so much as to, I think, you know, maybe the idea of saying, it's, it's a very good thought, and, but I'm sure he's got something in mind too, so.
Okay, we'll entertain whatever kind of motion you guys want.
Maybe you can just bring up to him the discussion that was had here. Absolutely. He watches the meetings anyway, so you, you could weigh about him.
No, I, it's, again, I'm not trying to knock the philosophy of it at all, because I think that's partly why we chose the piece of land, you know, got a piece of land that we were able to put them on, and, and, you know, the, the public works has done well to, to get in place so that they can be utilized, and, and, you know, we're hoping that other, other groups that might potentially need it, like, you know, service groups that could put them out there, and, and, so, I, I think all we're really after is a motion to.
To allocate funds to it. I'll make the recommendation that council approves the recreation department's request to purchase a C can, storage container at a cost not to exceed sixty-nine hundred dollars, with funds to be drawn from the recreation capital reserve.
Okay, any discussion on Lyle's motion? Hearing now, I'll call the questions of the favor. Posed, seeing none, it's carried unanimously. Thank you. And we'll move on to the Vulcan Library Board Representative Appointment Request.
So Barb may be able to answer a few more of these questions. The only anomaly on this one is Rain's not actually a library board member because she volunteers at the, at the, and is sometimes reversed with an honorary, and that might correct on that. So that's one of the reasons why she doesn't sit on the library board, but there is no conflict with sitting on Shunk Arch. Karen is good enough to, to reach out to Shunk Arch, and as long as council's comfortable with appointing her, and she's got a lot of, a lot of good background knowledge that would be very beneficial for Shunk Arch, so.
Okay, well.
I will make the recommendation that council approves the appointment of Lorraine Kirk to the Shunk Arch Library Board as the town volume representative, as her for a one-year term ending November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any discussion on Will's motion? Hearing now, I'll call the question of the favor. Posed, seeing none, it's carried unanimously. Okay, now we will move on to the committee reports, the written ones, and so the first one is the Waste Commission. And so this is October twenty-fourth.
And so this is October twenty fourth. Any questions on? This one? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the Municipal Planning Commission Draft Minutes of November the twelfth. Okay, any questions? I mean, I know that you guys have talked about them, but anyway. Hearing none, we'll move on to FCSS's November twenty first. Any questions on that one? Okay, if not, Food Bank. I don't know if there's an error in, I guess it really doesn't matter, um, it says, like, additions to Agenda eight point five, victim services donation, and then when you go down to new business under eight point five, um, it is, I apologize, I got, I got mixed up with the one of eight point four, so.
And these are draft, and not to get, they need to put draft over that, because.
No, and, yeah, and that's fine, I just, when I looked at.
She said it immediately, before we even get a chance to.
Yeah, yeah, that's, um, what do you call it, a water draw, um.
What do you say?
Watermark, coming in, so, no, I, I thought, I read that wrong, I, I thought A four was A five, or the tar, the shuttle service. Okay, any questions on that one? If not, we'll move on to the October tenth, twenty twenty four Executive Committee Meetings Minutes for Old Man River. Okay, any questions on that one? If not, we'll entertain a motion. Barbara?
I'll make the question.
Okay, any discussion on Barbara's motion? Hearing none, call questions, in favor? Opposed, seen none, security announced. Okay, moving on to council reports, council magazine.
Uh, everybody here, on November eighteenth, I attended the committee of the whole meeting, and, uh, then this past Saturday, on the twenty third, I, uh, got back in town just to, just in time to go to the five K jingle, and jingle all the five K run, and, uh, I thought it was a perfect date for it, there was, I thought there were ninety four people registered by, or ninety seven?
There was two.
And, uh, the renters there, they raised over three thousand dollars, uh, for the Food Bank, which is really cool for a small town for doing that, so that was, pretty cool to be, to be a part of that, and yes, I was one of the strikers who did the five K when this strange lady on Second Street came running, and I'm like, hey, you guys? And then I'm like, oh, yeah, I, I know her.
Stay away from that house.
Across the street, quick. Yeah, and then yesterday, just on my own time, I went, uh, to the, it's Christmas market, I was there a couple hours in, and it was, seemed like it was well attended, and the weather was much better than the day before, so, I haven't heard the numbers, and I'm still waiting for my callback for my fifty fifty winning, but, uh, yeah, that's, that's all I have.
Okay, any questions for that? If not, thanks, sir, or council to vote?
Um, same, basically, uh, committee on, committee on the whole on the eighteenth, and then, um, was doing, uh, Hot Dog at the Lions for, uh, the Santa Buck, I was really impressed with that. I was, um, I was watching the faces from young to old, and, uh, well, Charlie Brown doing the announcing, and, um, he said, this is, we were talking, and he said, this is, this is excellent, he said, it's, because he said, I think this is his last year being on the radio, and he said, this is the stuff I really miss, but I, I was watching people, and, you know, I, they started to run, and there was a bunch of little kids around, so we were giving them dogs and some chips and that, and, uh, everybody, you know, what really impressed me was the weather, and, you know, it kind of reminded me when I was a kid, but, um, nobody seemed down about it, everybody seemed actually up about it, and it was, it became a, a real good Christmas feel to that, that event, and it, I was very impressed with everybody and, um, who put it on, and, and it, as a whole, we had a great time just feeding people hot dogs, so I really enjoyed it, so, there's my report.
Okay, any questions for Richard? If not, thank you, councillor Smith.
Um, Sam, is everybody the budget meeting on the eighteenth? On the nineteenth, I had a VAPPA organized, a VAPPA meeting, which me and Tom have timed there. Um, they're looking to do a meet and greet early February, I can't, I don't have the exact date on these, but it's the sixth, maybe.
I did write it down here, just second, totally for sure.
They're, they're looking to kind of.
The fourth.
Oh, the fourth, yeah, the fourth, yeah. Uh, meet and greet at the Legion there, um, they're looking to kind of broaden away from just petroleum companies and into more the green energy side of things, so, maybe, uh, um, restructuring and kind of re-changing the name and things like that, so we'll see how that goes. Um, golf and country club meeting that night, uh, eight o'clock, where I had lots of discussion on the coming year, and we got some succession planning to do with our Lions, with, uh, the Greenskeeper, and.
Duke.
With Duke, yeah, and, uh, so I'm good, getting into some contract negotiations there, too, which I'm a part of. And to, or, yeah, Wednesday, I have a press board meeting, which is a budget meeting.
Okay, any questions for Will? No, thank you, councillor Sanderson.
So I attended the, uh, FCSS AA convention, November thirteenth through fifteenth in Edmonton, and thank you for letting me go to that. I went to the Alberta Poverty Reduction Network meeting, um, the morning of November thirteenth, prior to the meeting of the FCSS convention. Um, there was twenty attendants and represented thirteen communities. Uh, one topic trend that we are all impacted by is lack of affordable housing, supportive housing, NIMBYism, which is not my backyard, um, and, uh, poverty alleviation strategies are important for frontline staff in the short term, unhoused Albertans are living in the rough, wearing campsites. Housing, food, security, transportation, employment, mental health are all interconnected, FCSS focuses on prevention, there are programs that focus on intervention, but they are not enough. Uh, there is no multi-year funding, and thus there is high staff turnover, and continuity is diminished. So systematic changes and or prevention components are important to FCSS and others, how can we bring stories, live experience, human, humanize the issues? Um, shift thinking and increase awareness to our, our communities, and debunk myths and public disorder on these issues, so, um, that was a theme that kind of went through FCSS convention, um, what we just talked at this Alberta poverty. The next steps for them are anyone in the, in this group are encouraged to join a steering committee, and, um, they will be meeting with Derek Cook, I don't know who he is, in the Canadian Poverty Institute, so they are becoming a, a, a part of the Canadian Poverty Institute to brainstorm some follow-up actions, so the next meeting they meet, maybe up to three or four times a year, next meeting's May, March twelfth at two thirty, it's online, and then they will meet again at FCSS again next year, so I will follow these meetings and see where they go with this and just update, update council, because it doesn't, I know, I know my data's gonna make a break me, so it seems well organized, so hopefully all goes well there. Um, it was very busy, one of the first sessions I went to was one that Dawn and Laurie were a part of up there, and they did a really, really good job, and, um, like I said, identifying trends, telling the stories, and evaluate the impact at the provincial level as well as in our own communities. You need to make the stories humane and personal, so people get it, because right now they just think homelessness, and you don't, uh, really get it. There's a new tool coming out for FCSS, and, um, it will better track exactly what each FS, FCSS programs that are doing, and so, hopefully it will show the government that we are very busy in the FCSS offices, because, um, I don't think they all see that. Um, I attended another one that was flying by the seat of our pants, and, um, How Leaders Lead Matters, lower the anxiety of the system, we heard the stories, all the pictures, I don't know if you probably remember that, when the Strathcona, uh, Strathcona Community Center in the parkade, there was a bomb, went off, and all the, just but all the rooms in that community center were being used at that time, but nobody was hurt, except for the person, when the police came, he did shoot himself, but Strathcona thought they knew how to respond, and to reach out to partners, but they were not prepared for that trauma response. So some of the key learnings for Strathcona was that community size does not matter, trauma-informed leadership is imperative, and training for everyone, including leaders, is very important in the trauma side, because sometimes that gets kind of, and I think, I, I'm assuming you guys do with the fire, the emergency, do you have trauma in that, or?
On, on the fireside, they do, with racism and stuff like that.
So that was very interesting. Um, I went to the FCS one oh one, it was really good two years ago when I went, but it was much better two years ago, but we had minister people there, but they were all on recess from, so there was nobody up in Edmonton, so unfortunately we didn't have any ministers or, or staff there. Um, again, um, how can we raise awareness for homelessness? And it isn't always like we envision it, um, someone loses their job, and they aren't aware of other programming, and we're finding a lot with getting people up into the FCSS, but they don't know what's available to them, so they lose their house, so then they're homeless. And he had a job, but he lost his job. Some get cancer, and they can't afford their bills, and then they become homeless. So it's not always what people think, and so we want to start telling the story so that people understand it's not just somebody being lazy and doesn't want to work, so. Um, Kelly Nelson ran for president, but she came in second, and she's still on the FCSS AA board as an elective director, so we're very happy about, about that. Um, November eighteenth, I had, uh, in the morning, I had the victim services. We made a motion to disperse the rest of the funds once monies are released from the common shares, we all thought it was gonna be a couple weeks, it's probably gonna be the middle of December, so, that's gonna keep me busy trying to get everybody to cash their checks before the end of the year, but we'll get her done. Um, any funding remaining after all the, um, reports are done, and, uh, the accountants paid for, will go to the, uh, Food Bank RDM program, because they showed it money from the government this past year. And then at ten, at November eighteenth, I came to the committee of the whole meeting, and then, uh, November twenty first, we had the FCSS and Food Bank meetings. Um, you don't get, you're not getting the staff reports, and I think it's important that, um, you get an opportunity to read these. So I'll leave a copy if you can, and you can just attach it, but there's, um, um, some things that I.
If, if you get them digitally, you can just email it to me, and I can distribute them.
I can get Dawn to send them to you then, yeah.
And then I'll just distribute them throughout.
And the, the town is, uh, the staff are so appreciative of everything the town does for them, um, they mentioned to Stu that, you know, they're tying dogs up in front of the library that are coming into the Food Bank and that, and the next day, she said, we had a dog tied stand there, and she said, when she came to work, she just couldn't believe it, that he just, and that's kind of, um, help they get from the maintenance guys, the outdoor guys, so it's pretty amazing. Uh, the county IT sent, I mean, sent us a bill for thirteen thousand thirty one dollars and seventy five cents that we were not prepared for. I think you've been, have you talked to Melz yet? Okay, um, for upgrades, for software, uh, computers, websites, lock, root routers, and, like I said, it wasn't budgeted for. Kelly said that, um, uh, because she knows the town does a lot for the FCSS and the Food Bank, that she would take it to the county and, uh, see if they won't make a deal, and maybe take it on as a lease and pay for a portion of that, so, um, Melz was gonna call and contact Kim and just sort of see what the town does, and then take it to their council, so hopefully they will come through and pay that for us. Um, uh, November, and then that, we had the Food Bank after, September hampers, we had forty one hampers go up to ninety three people with a value of eleven thousand thirty five dollars and twenty cents. The October hampers were forty seven, hampers went out to a hundred and five people, valued the hampers. I didn't write that down. Anyhow, and the whole year, a hundred, one thousand and forty five people have received hampers from January to the end of October, it's not counted, no, no, December, and I want you to know that every village and hamlet has utilized that Food Bank. They have a report, and so we'll send that out, just so you guys can kind of, kind of see what's going on with that. Uh, and there were, uh, three hundred and forty nine of those one thousand with children. Um, the shuttle, the Vulcan finally has one approved driver, so drivers are, uh, approved by the Clarence Home Transportation, not by, um, at the Food Bank here. And. I was so open this. Uh, there was, uh, oh, I wanted to tell you, there was thirteen deliveries were made by staff of the hampers, and one was made by a peace officer, so that's how we work as a team, and to get help our, uh, people get their, their food, there was five new clients this mo, this, uh, this month, oh, and the value for this month was twelve thousand three oh two forty. Okay, one is, one of the riders, um, have been able to use the program twice, and has truly been, been a game changer for him. I think it's from Carmody, after living for years in extreme poverty, and this is me telling the real story, because we thought, we gotta get this out here. Um, he's been living in extreme poverty, the shuttle has allowed him to find housing supports, financial supports, have access to more variety of healthy food, and find a doctor. The situation went from near eviction and very frail, weak, and generally unwell physically, to stable housing, improved health, and financial stability. It was suggested that we allow him to ride for free on his first trip to remove the monetary barrier, and then have him pay going forward. That free trip allowed him to access all the supports needed to improve his situation, and he is so thankful. He proudly handed me ten dollars on the following ride, and thanked me for being patient on the first trip. This is a success and a testament to the impact on the people who now know need this service. And, uh, November twenty third, I also attended the Jingle All the Way Run, um, it was just a perfect day, it was like a postcard with that snow coming down. Um, people came from Pincha Creek, Mountain Blackie, High River, all over the county as far as northeast of Mangerville, so the weather did not slow people down at all. We thought, I thought we'd be lucky to have fifty, and just hope everybody showed up, except for a few people got sick, so. So thank you so much to Michelle Monchireman, Chris Gochey, Channing, Balkan Lions for serving the hot dogs, and the Host Nine in line, um, it was so much fun, we're looking forward to next year, and Charlie said he wouldn't be a bit surprised if this doesn't escalate to other communities, because it's what a great way to raise money for their communities.
It was awesome.
Um, the Marcus sixtieth anniversary was canceled due to an outbreak of COVID, so staff residents and some family members still celebrated, Lori read letters, one was from the premier, one was from, uh, RML Agent Schau, and, uh, the other one was from Minister Nixon. So that was nice, it was too bad that we couldn't all be there, but it was good, so. Um, Marcus Foundation meeting is tomorrow night, and will be held at the county office due to COVID outbreak.
Okay, any questions for Judy?
Thanks, Judy, good one.
Are you, uh, anticipating that the Marcus Foundation might do another date instead of for their, for their?
For, they're going to see if they, if it works.
Yeah, okay, I was just curious.
They, they're hoping to, but we don't know how this is, when, yeah, because there was, there's, I did hear today's report, and there was three, and she usually lets us know if there's any more, so.
That's good, thank you.
More thorough than when I read it.
Yeah, that's right, all, but, but we do appreciate, no, I mean, I, you did far more than I would have done, uh, write a letter, or write, write for the last meeting. Write a letter or write for the last meeting.
I don't do it justice when I read your report.
That's right. Okay, so no questions for Judy, thank you, Councilor.
November 18th, I attended the committee of the whole for the financials. And then November 20th, I had a library meeting. And I did not make it to the Jingle All the Way. I did see them, but I didn't go out and cheer, it was chilly out. And I did attend the craft fair yesterday and also went in and observed the Snowflake Festival, which I think once the recreational department did fantastic with. And it was nice to see the children vendors in the hallway. And so it wasn't just the adults. And then I just met with Kim briefly today. Thank you for taking some time to answer some questions. And then I did receive an email of complaint, but the town's already addressed it on a building. And I had a couple of people stop me at the grocery store complaining about the smell of the dump on Friday and Saturday. I was like, they're burning garbage, so.
Well, not burning garbage. Just the wood.
The wood.
Oh, the wood, they were burning the wood. I think it was just, it was, it was quite a strong smell. But I like, it just said if they had an issue to, from the, over to the dump. And that is all. I have a meeting on Wednesday for Hal Kamala.
Okay, any questions for Barbara? No, thank you. Okay, for me, I had a SEWA special executive meeting. And we went over some of the information that we had hoped to get together and send out the scoring charts for the three that were vendors. And then I had two attended the budget meeting. Then I went to the BAPA meeting, which was, they've got a new administrator girl to like, like when we first started, Lendo was there, Kuchet and then, then this Lucas, Kristen Lucas. And now we've got Marla. I don't know what her last name is.
Lundgren. Lundgren.
Yeah, it was Lundgren, but I don't know her married name is.
That's what they call her.
Oh, do they?
Because everybody knows about that.
Yeah, well, that's what she'd said too, but she did say her married name and I, I mean, I always known her as Lundgren. Anyway, so she's doing it now and Will represents the town at that meeting. But, and like Will had said, that they're going to try and bring the, the other communities, energy groups in and then they've thought, well, they may even do a new branding and change their name to take into the energy groups. Because, you know, with the solar and the wind and the, you know, other things that potentially could be out there. I think they realize that it's time to, it's totally funded by the oil and gas industry really. And they do have representatives from both the county and the town and public at large sit on it. Then I had a solid waste meeting. And so this, this solid waste meeting, we had an election for the chair and vice chair. This is the first time I've ever had it happen, but that I've been involved. There was a tie vote for the chair. And so we didn't know what to do because in our procedure by law, it doesn't say anything about what you do at the time. So we, Terry Penny said, well, he thought that he read somewhere that you asked for it to be called again. And it was still a tie, it didn't change. And so he says then the next thing is to flip a coin. And so I talked to Kim and some municipalities, ours says that it's by.
We draw from a hat.
Draw from a hat, the county uses a draw from a garbage can.
Centrical.
And but.
Some are very specific about what you have to use.
So anyway, it was a flip of coin and I was successful. And then we had the vice chair voted in, which was from Wixtrow. And the, it was quite a discussion on SEWA, you know, what it's going to do and how it's going to move forward. And then we went into the budget and the budget was discussed and approved. It had been sent out the meeting before in October and, or means, in November, in October meeting, sorry. And so there was just some alterations in it and made the alterations and it seemed to prove. So hopefully it doesn't affect our budget much, if any.
I haven't pumped it in yet.
Okay, anyway, I brought it in so that Kim and Karen have it, so that if you really want to look at it. It's a fairly good sized organization now, it's a $1.7 million budget. You know, and, and they have approximately $300,000 in reserves, but we just gave them permission to buy a new 110 truck lap deck. So that'll, you know, half of it at least, if not a little bit more. And yeah, so that's pretty well it for that waste. I did go in the Santa Walk, I probably should have because I took a lot of flak. Dylan and I went out and stood on the street and kind of tried to cheer them on for most of it. Some of them, like you said, I wasn't sure how many went by because I was counting them to start off with. And then, then some of them stopped visiting, some of them stopped harassing me. I haven't missed out what the count was, so. But anyway, it was really, like you said, lots, lots of fun even as a spectator, even though it was snowing like crazy there. But I appreciate the staff and the people that put it on and also the participants, you know. I think that should be a hats off to the participants for going out and taking the time to participate in it. Then we had a SEWA special executive meeting again today to discuss. We have a meeting on Friday, board meeting on Friday, and you guys are all welcome to participate on it if you wish. The SEWA special executive is going to recommend to the board which candidate to pick and partly the reasoning why. And so, and then there is a proposed letter of intent to hopefully get the board to approve. And if they approve the one that I think is going to be recommended, they're hoping to have, this group believes that they can have an MOU ready for February. And so I'm recommended to the, to the, to the special committee that we recommend to the board, that once we get a letter of intent, that we have a kind of a public meeting and to anybody that wants to listen to what is being proposed and how and where and why. And then hopefully that, that'll be a real positive move forward with this project. Because if they go with the group that is being recommended, there's a substantial savings and a substantial opportunity for it to be a great project, you know, for the, for the SEWA region as a whole. So we're hoping that it'll move forward. That was some of the discussion at Solid Waste is that, you know, will SEWA exist after they make this? And of course, the people that have been involved in the SEWA, that believe in the SEWA philosophy, believe that there is a life after, they pick that until they get closer to lighting the fires or, or, you know, disposing of waste, but, but anyway. So that was today's meeting, it went on for an hour and a half today, this morning. And that's pretty well it for me. Somebody ask some questions? Okay, if not, somebody wish to file the council reports? Richard? Any discussion on Richard's motion? Are you now called question in favor? Opposed, it's Karen, thank you. Activity list?
Everybody's had a chance to read their report, only two things outstanding, one for long-term, but the other will be taken care of, I'm guessing, at the next council meeting, so. Is there's any questions on that?
Did you get all that survey or that?
I don't know, I don't get them, Karen gets them.
We're close, yeah. We haven't got to by a certain date, it gets cut off and appreciate the ones that took the time to fill them out. And those that don't, don't. Okay, any activity list for Kim? If not, we can move on to the CAO.
Okay, so again, everybody's had a chance to read their report, so let's kind of quickly go through it. The map was one of the big ones, the municipal accountability. When they went, she went through the documents fairly quickly because of course we've been through it a few years ago. I did make her very aware that doing communities under, solely under 5,000 is probably not the scope of what this should be with some of the things that are going in on in the larger centers and that sort of thing. So appreciate that doing it for us, but it's a lot of work putting those documents together. And I don't know, I honestly don't know with manpower, how villages and that are able to do it. The only reason Karen's able to do it because we did it last year and last year, not last year, four years ago. And what we did it four years ago, it took us probably two months to put the documents together. This time Karen was able to duplicate some of that, but it still took a little over a month to put this together. And then you review it in a couple of hours and then they make all kinds of recommendations and that. And last time we gave it a little 13-page report, I'm guessing we're going to get the same kind of report. But as you know, you know well enough that I've been, you know, the way I do this job is if something gets identified, I try to fix it as quickly as possible. So a couple of the things that we talked about during the meeting, that is why they came on today in this meeting. So that leads to the policy and bylaw amendments that I've been doing. I did a bunch of research to make sure that we were hitting on those properly. Funny part is, again, this goes back to the comparison to the bigger centers. A lot of times when I'm putting policy together and that, I look at the bigger centers for the templates. They don't have it and they're not part of this program, so nobody can even tell them that they need them. So, you know, it's kind of an interesting dynamic, you know. I brought out that, you know, it was very specific in the map that we're not allowed to put the police requisition, it's not a requisition, the police funding, we're not allowed to put it on our tax bill because it's not a requisition, it's an invoice from the province. But all the bigger centers don't go through the map and they all just put it on their, on their taxation as a requisition. And nobody's telling them that they can't. Yet, if you're under 5,000, you get this nice little review that tells you you can't do that stuff. So I, as we worked through the program, I made her very aware of all those little things. She was very receptive to, to my comments. So did the budget updates, we have the waiver of final conditions for the, for the property in the industrial, so that's going to land titles. So we just been working very hard on that, on a development agreement for them as well. We can get them started as quick as we can. I know they've hired some local contractors that are just chomping at the bit to get some things done. Well, you know, it's the town, like, let's ask the vapor, ask them for permission to start digging that stuff already. And we're like, well, let's, let's wait till we get the title in their name before we do that, you know. So, so we've been working on those, had a meeting with, sorry, did a letter of support for South Grow. The QP negotiations, I've actually got a meeting set up for this Wednesday. So that's, I received a proposal, sent a counter back, got some great positive feedback from the counter. So they feel they should be able to come meet in person one day and hopefully have something that I can bring to council and get ratified, so hopefully that goes well. Did the MSC contracts, talked to the CAO.
So there's a spelling state there.
Which?
Talked to.
Oh, you talked to this, yes, sorry.
Talked to.
I will get that corrected with the county CAO, but the bunch of items being the roof of the arena and the cemetery, cemetery very simple because we already have background programs and things. So they would very, they would just do that within there. And then we're going to bring a proposal for the roof of the arena. We'll be talking to council a little bit more about whether that's something you want to get booked before the end of this year or. So, yeah, remember, community member inquiries, a little bit on the Curly Club and then the trespass issue that was brought forward. Don't want to go into too much, there were some kids that were breaking and entering and trespassing in a vacant building. So that's been dealt with from the RCMP, peace officers, Doug Wayne, based on a fire site. And then we just started with everybody that complained about it. So we got that taken care of. My meetings of interest were obviously the map, net with future bill, just for an update. It sounds like they're going to be asking for another extension, so that will probably come to our next meeting. And committed a whole for the budget and Christine Holmes was in and is looking again on that Willow's development side, still looking at development options. And came with a pretty, not, not a formal proposal, but a very informal proposal at this time, possibly looking at resulting to, to multifamily and perhaps restructuring the lot so that he could do fourplexes in there. It corresponds, the Meadow Lake Way right across the road is also R4 for multifamily as well. So it shouldn't receive too much, so hopefully he's very moving forward with that. But at this point, like every developer that comes to talk to us, it's, you know, until we see the application, it's just, he's exploring ideas, so. Is there movement on the other, the walk up at the end of? Oh, the apartment site? There is, there's not anything formalized yet, but Ari West is partnered with him on that. He's been submitting stuff and they're doing, I think they're trying to secure financing, to be completely honest, without going in camera with their, but, yeah, they're, they're still working on it, yeah. And those were my meetings of interest.
Okay, any questions? Okay, hearing none, some wish to move, Richard moves the administration reports. Any discussion on Richard's motion? Hearing none, call the question in favor? Opposed, saying none. It's Carrie, we have no closed meeting, adjournment?
Well, Doug, wow. He was waiting, he was going to.
Any discussion on Lawrence's motion? Hearing none, recall the question, those favor? Opposed. We have one opposed. It's Carrie. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, everybody.
Well played, well.
Smooth move.